All right, the time is now 6:01 PM and I will call the Hastings School Board regular meeting to order. Today is June 26, 2024. Could I please get Clerk Milner to take attendance for us?
Director Pine?
Here.
Director Zuzek?
Here.
Vice Chair Dressley?
Here.
Chair Tate?
Here.
Director Brunz?
Here.
Director Milner here and Director Biermeyer?
Here.
Thank you. All right, if I could get everyone to please stand and remove your headwear, if you're able to, for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. With that, we are moving on to approving the agenda. First, I don't do this very often, but I would like to make a motion to send Policy 503 back to the Policy Committee for further discussion. If I could get a second?
I'll second up.
Thank you. The rationale is the Policy Committee thoroughly discussed Policy 503 and during the last committee meeting, we requested Vice Chair Dressley to update the few policies that we have on for tonight with legislative changes. Typically legislative changes are pretty minor and we're just going to fly through them. The legislative changes in that specific policy, which is up for its third reading, which would be adopted tonight if we moved forward with it, I feel that we need to add some clarifying language because it has to do with absences, student absences, and the legislative language says that parents can, or parents or guardians can request excused absences to board members. I'm like, whoa, we don't want parents sending us emails, so we need to add some extra language in here. While it may be legal to do that, we would prefer that parents not do that. So that is the reason for the request. So with that, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of sending Policy 503 back to the Policy Committee for discussion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously to send 503 back to the Policy Committee. So that item will be removed from the agenda for tonight. Now, I'm looking for a motion on the remainder of the agenda.
Zuzek makes a motion to approve the meeting as modified.
Thank you.
Milner, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion passes unanimously to approve the agenda as it has been modified. Next, I'm looking for a motion on the minutes from May 22, 2024, regular board meeting and the June 4, 2024 special meeting.
I move to approve the minutes for both meetings.
Thank you.
Biermeyer, seconds.
Right, any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously to approve the minutes from both meetings mentioned. All right, next I'd like to thank the visitors in the room and watching us online for taking the time to be involved in the Hastings School Board. And then we have the Raider spotlight up next.
All right, very good. We have one group tonight that we're wanting to recognize and this goes back to April when we had our staff appreciation and so really had a volunteer committee who stepped forward and really made it an incredibly special event. So we wanted to make sure that we recognized those who were most instrumental in that and so we have a couple here with us tonight. Jessie Nowak, Brandy Wensler, Brenda Stagno, Sherri Fox, Jan Hurtel, and Lisa Hadine. We're all very instrumental. So if you can just please come forward, speak to that briefly and then we have a medallion for you.
Me talk, all right. Hi, I'm Brandy. Yeah, so Jessie apologizes, she's in Nashville tonight with her work. Jessie happened to be kind of the spearhead of this whole new formation of a staff appreciation committee. Her reasoning behind that was that she took note that every elementary school and our middle school had a PTA and we just didn't have one of those at the high school. And she had done some grassroots organizing for high school teacher appreciation in years past and as well as appreciation type events for the high school, including supply drive somewhere in the midst of the school year, getting Kleenexes and highlighters and extra school supplies that teachers often purchase on their own. So this was a kind of a community outreach moment. But then we wanted to do something bigger for all of the staff of the Hastings School District and so an appreciation event was organized and put together for, very quickly, I think it was over a matter of three months that we were really hurrying to get some community support. There were some businesses that were able to donate and discount a lot of the things that we needed for the event, including awards for our teachers, achievement awards. And I know some of our board members happened to be present at that event and got to see teachers as they walked in to the event, which there is nothing, money can't buy what, how good that felt, seeing all the teachers walk in. They were hearing music from our high school jazz band and our high school acapella singers as they were walking in. The other really cool bonus was every little paper lunchbox had words of encouragement that were written by Hastings students. So actually, yeah, putting those sandwiches together the night before, we got to read all of them and it was pretty fun. Yeah. Any words to add?
No, well, first I had just a really nominal role. In fact, I was kind of surprised to hear my name. But I think the people that jumped forward that you mentioned previously and just took this by the horns, it's been an area that I understand and appreciate is difficult for the school district to support because of what we would like to do, which is having a lunch and doing all those kinds of things are restricted on the spending. So to see the community step forward and have such a successful first run at it, it gets really powerful. And when I had opportunity to tour Pinecrest with board members right before this, it made me reflect on serving on a PTA or PEP group at that time. And to see, to have seen that grow for the last five years and have PTAs at every elementary and at the middle school and I feel like it's cresting over into seeing parent engagement at the high school and then this overarching umbrella is just really powerful. And while those names previously mentioned were really a big part and we hadn't had opportunity to recognize the people that made the awards, the Years of Service Awards, this was a big community lift, right? To get the funding to pull this off, coordinate getting the boxes into kids' campus so that they could be decorated prior to the event, making sure that all of the food was at the high school in place for it to be prepped. The accommodation by the food service staff to accommodate space and prep. It really was an example of it takes a village and I'm hopeful that the energy carries over and that other families learn from the experience and that this becomes as much of a tradition as some of our other events that we host here in the district.
I would just add that I'm still hearing about that date. Like it was just to have all of us together and we haven't done, so thank you. And you're right, the thank yous are far reaching because it didn't happen by accident and so a lot of participation that we're incredibly grateful for. It was fun when people were coming in. At one point, there were two different sandwich boxes and I saw people like going to the bottom and I'm thinking, what are they doing? The signs up here. They wanted this special decorating for the boxes. So that was just fun to see and people loved that. So thank you. Like I said, we have a small token for you and we are grateful for your volunteers.
Very well done.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you to all who pulled that off and I'm sorry I wasn't able to be there, but I've heard phenomenal things about it. All right. Next is public comment. And we have two speakers this evening. And they will be allotted three minutes of time each. Ms. Ludwig over here has a 30-second sign to alert you to the time remaining as well as a timer to signal the end of your time. We ask that speakers state their name for the record and refrain from using this time to criticize or complain about any specific employee by name. Please be aware that the school board is interested in hearing comments from the public and will listen carefully, but is not obligated to respond or debate in this setting. We ask that speakers be respectful and comments made by any others will be ruled out of order and those not abiding by this could potentially be asked to leave. With that, I will go in order of submission, which means Ms. Hadine is speaking first. Welcome.
My name is Lisa Hadine. I'm a resident of Denmark Township and I'm a substitute employee in the district. I just wanted to come talk about the overarching criteria, or not criteria, guidelines for a district school board around governance and community transparency, or transparency towards the community. And I know this is a common thread of things that I speak of and I think it's because governance is tricky. It's really fun to be in the decision-making, the day-to-day decision-making. It's easy to comprehend. It feels like an immediate impact, but the governance level and setting the overarching goals is critical and I just want to continue to encourage everybody on the school board to stay at that level. I've been able to attend the last couple of Policy Committee meetings, which is a little uncommon because they're hosted in the middle of a workday, but there were days that I wasn't responsible to work. And there's been conversations that I think would be interesting for the whole board to hear. We had at least an hour's worth of discussion around community, or excuse me, chemical use and misuse and that policy. And it wasn't really about the policy at the last meeting. It was about the process and how that's handled, the nuances of that work, the fact that much of that work in this district is funded by grants. And I would encourage those levels of conversation to be held at the board for learning because you have relatively young or less experienced board. And then two, it leads to that governance conversation about what's the budget allocation? What's the real meaningful budget allocation? Do you want to be living with grants? If that's the reality of current school finance, how are you going to go about doing that? How do you allocate people the appropriate amount of time? Is there, is there, and I believe Director Zuzek has brought this up in the past, maybe there's a place for a grant writer? If that fund, if that position is overly funded, can be funded. It's just tricky work and it's not about, you know, the second conversation in that meeting turned to dress code and hooded sweatshirts. And again, it's sort of like we all have personal opinions about what kids should get to wear to school and not get to wear to school and what that means and what that doesn't mean. But that's not governance. Governance is saying, we care about the academic success of our students and educational access. And then we're going to leave the how to, thank you, we're going to leave the how to our experienced administrators. And it's hard, but I just encourage you to keep pulling yourselves back to that governance level and talk about how do you balance, in this case, chemical use and misuse, academic excellence, mental health supports for students. Those are the things. And then, I'm a longstanding opponent to even your elections. I understand you're going to move forward with that. I would encourage you to do it in a way that unwinds over time and not impact your personal terms. I do care about the partisanship. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our second speaker this evening is Ms. Try. Welcome.
I'm Teddy Try and I'm resident of the city and graduate of the high school. And I also work as a substitute para and now I'm doing summer school also. And I want to thank this year's school board for bringing public comment back into the meeting where it should be and be on record. The topic of changing to even school year board elections was first on school board work session agendas back in '22 and '23. The main reason for this possible change is that since 2005, resulting from changes to Minnesota law, the cost of the school board elections was passed from the county to the school districts. And at that time, 168 of the 331 districts in Minnesota still had odd-year elections, including us. Of the 139 districts that have since moved to even-year elections, 90% made the change by adding one year to the terms of the current board members, thus putting the next board elections into even-numbered years. By last year, only 29 districts still held odd-year elections, including us. This year, seven of those 29, including us, are considering the change to even-numbered years. For us, that would be 2026 for the three seats elected in 2021 and 28 for the four seats elected in last year. The other option for making the change to even-numbered year elections would be to have another round of odd-year elections for the terms, for the, when the current terms end. This would mean the district would have to pay for two more elections at a cost of about $30,000 for both of them. And that doesn't include the administrative staff at the school district. That's about 90% of a person's job for about two months after the elections. This is not good financial choice and would be a waste of taxpayer money to have these two extra elections. Money that could be better used for classrooms. And if we are trying to save money, why wouldn't we, why would we want to spend that $30,000 unnecessarily? If we were to change to even-year elections, I would strongly prefer adding one year to the current terms. This choice is the most fiscally appropriate and I would expect our school board to make choices that are best for the district. After all, that is one of their duties, to use district money as prudently as possible. Do we want to use, waste money by having two more odd-year elections? No, I think not. Thank you for giving me this time.
Thank you very much. All right, next up, we have reports and discussions. And first up is the superintendent report.
All right, I have a couple of things. The first is you are the very first to see a preview of our website, which will be launched tomorrow. And I just really want to give a shout out to HCTV. And so if you pull it up, here's our new website, looks completely different and that video is, was done by HCTV. So we're grateful for their partnership. I'll let you just watch that for a second and then add to it. Isn't it good? All right, so that will be playing in the background of our new website. You can see we've got some bullets kind of on the side of the things that are most commonly used. You see school supply list there. After we start the year, we'll change that out so it'll be responsive. All of our sites have been cleared, cleaned up and you see a new and different look to each of those. And then I should also add that this video also has a narrative longer version that will be a promotional video also. So we'll be sharing that soon, but wanted you to see that first. Any comments or questions on that? Thanks. All right, a couple other things I just wanted to make you aware of. We have a number of new staff starting on Monday. So we are welcoming our new Director of Teaching and Learning, our new middle school principal and our Director of Facility and Safety. So they are joining us on Monday, which we're really excited about. And then also just an acknowledgement of our directors this week. Gets a little crazy with deadlines, with reports and federal reports and all of that. So a number of people in this room who have a lot of deadlines that they're working on. So it's always a busy time. And then I also just wanted to let you know that we had a public hearing at Vermillion Township this past Thursday and that was in regards to the donated land. We were requesting or had requested a parking lot so that our students can use that and the space for that parking lot was the ability to put one bus in there and be able to turn that around. And so there was not a lot of people there, but there was a lot of public comment. That now will be voted on by the Township Board on July 11. We're not real confident that that is going to be successful. There was a lot of, there was a lot of support for that. So we're talking about next steps from there that I wanted to make you aware. Any questions?
All right, thank you. Next up, Superintendent Champa is going to be giving us a legislative summary. I should say. The intent of doing this this way is to make sure that all, obviously all board members are up to speed on what happened with the legislature, but also so that the public can see exactly what happened regarding education.
Set the Hastings priorities. These are the things you as a board said these are the areas that for Hastings are most important to us moving forward. And then the reality of how things actually turned out are, first off, the supplemental education bill. So with that, 43 million in additional one-time funding and then there was an allocation of 50 million that was set aside in '23 to expand voluntary pre-kindergarten. And just a note on that, voluntary pre-kindergarten is a qualifying, so districts need to be eligible to qualify for that. We are not eligible. So a lot of times we're hearing that and are we applying, are we not? And in that regard, we are not. And then how did that budget bill break down? 31 million is for teacher compensation for the REDACT, which we've been spending a lot of time talking about. And then they reallocated 33 million that was originally intended for the approved curriculum can now also be used for a curriculum, but instead of supporting districts with approved curriculum, there is a universal formula across the board that all districts are getting for eligible expenses that are expanded beyond curriculum. $5 million for student-teacher stipend pilot and then 4.6 for an attendance pilot project. And if you have questions along the way, just interrupt me. Then the education policy bill and a lot of these things, the policies are associated with the budget as well, but the REDACT training timeline, and this is largely due to letters and how long that training takes, is extended to July of '26. The literacy incentive aid eligible uses was expanded that I just mentioned. And then the special ed pipeline grants were expanded to include other licensure tiers and that is closed for the time being, so we're looking at if that will open up again. And then new flexibility to using food service funds for cafeteria furniture and then the establishment of a reserve for student support personnel aid to allow more time to utilize those funds. Continuing with that, there's the extension of the Hold Harmless for statewide compensatory funding. So remember, this is attached to educational benefits formerly known as free and reduced meal applications. And because now meals are universally at no charge, our compensatory funding would look very different if we didn't have the Hold Harmless. You can expect this to be a topic in our next session as well. There are new statewide health standards for our courses, but even though those have been put in place, the implementation is two to three years out. Special ed paperwork reduction. So this is specific to DAP and so students who may have been eligible for DAP before were required to go through all of the entire battery for special ed testing. This allows the assessment to be specific just for DAP. There's a delay of the civics graduation requirement to '25, '26. There's the establishment of school district cellphone policies, which is March 15, but you will be reviewing that for this upcoming year. Clear guidelines and timelines for flexible learning year programs and then a task force for EL programs. Continuing with that, there are some employee provisions. So earned safe and sick time was new in the legislative session in '23. So this language, this round really clarified a lot of that language, looking at the base rate, who's eligible, the increment of time. It did expand this use to include bereavement and then was clarifying also options for record-keeping and reporting. And I will just comment that our HR department, at one point, there were what we would call two buckets. There was sick leave and then there was E-SST. And in our district, that was put into one, there's now a requirement that it's into one. So nice job on being forward-thinking on that. We have medical, paid family medical leave, which will be in play January 1 of 2026. So you can expect a lot of language and clarifications on this as we move forward. And then paraprofessional training. So last year, there was a new requirement that paraprofessionals receive eight hours of training prior to the first day of student contact. That has been reduced to six, however, there's, for this year only. And then there is a clause that that training must be in consultation with their representatives. So we are planning for that. And then other provisions outside of the funding or policy bills, a lot of these are in regards to our school resource officer and the concerns that were following the '23 session. Pension changes, moving that age from 66 to 65. And then for school boards, and this has been, this has changed so many times, but because of the cost of the elections, that a school board vacancy two years or less could be by appointment rather than a special election and then a requirement for cybersecurity reporting. Policy changes, this one I know Jessica's very excited about, or Director Dressley. There are 50 policies that must be updated, five zero. Some of those are quite simple. One thing is world's best workforce is no longer world's best workforce. Instead, it is striving for comprehensive achievement and civic readiness. So eight of those policies are needing to change that title. And then I just highlighted a number of things that called out some of the policy changes. Student discipline, corporal punishment, that one also connects back to that prone restraint with our SRO policy. Student journalist bullying prohibition, student medication includes telehealth and making space available for that. You see the cellphone policy, curriculum and instruction, making sure that the definitions from session of '23 are included in that. Library materials, there's new policy requirements there. Health standards, we talked about that in two to three years, that will be in place. And then credit for learning. So these are in regards to PSEO and making sure that PSEO students, the grading practices follow ours. And then secondly to that, secondary institutions must now report if we have students who are not making sufficient progress in those courses. So big things that did not pass, that there was a lot of conversation, unemployment insurance for striking employees did not pass, 15-minute minimum for school lunch did not, $25 minimum for hourly employees, adding more requirements to world's best workforce, student attendance reporting requirements, cardiac emergency response plans, drills and AED multiple locations, graduation requirement to complete the FAFSA. and AED multiple locations, graduation requirement to complete the FAFSA, mental health screening for all students. You might have heard a lot of comments about a ban on bird hatching in schools. That did not pass. And then there were, there was some language for open meeting law changes that also did not pass. Couple of federal law changes, Title IX, there's some new language there. This is being challenged in 11 states right now, so we're in a bit of a wait-and-see pattern for that. And then Fair Labor Standards Act, and just looking at who may be exempt and as our salaried employees. And you can see that number is currently, well, on Monday, it'll move to 43,888, and then in January to 58,656. So quite a substantial change there. And then the things that we're really expecting to be at the forefront of the '25 session is the general ed formula, compensatory review, we're talking about that a lot, obviously, continuing the conversation about open meeting law, funding for the unemployment. If you remember that, that was also new last year. We had dollars last year, this year, and we believe part of next year, so looking to revisit that. Pension reform, long-term facility maintenance, and then the number of board members. So districts with six members in some areas are having difficulty making, moving things forward, so there's a desire to possibly petition to change that number from six to seven. And then just a reminder that districts should consider submitting a resolution by September 30th with board approval for the delegate assembly, which is December 6th and 7th, which we have two members. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much for putting all that together. Appreciate it. All right, next we have Smart Choices, Student Wellness Annual Report. We have Mary Ellen Fox joining us. Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name's Mary Ellen Fox, and I'm the Health Services Coordinator for the Hastings School District. And I'm just going to say that I was one of the people that went to the recognition event, and it was spectacular. And I got my 20-year thing, so it was pretty cool. Sorry, it was pretty cool. I've been Chair of the Student Wellness Committee for, since its inception, and I can't remember how long ago that was, but it's been a while. And one of the things that came about since that time is the, an adjustment to the student wellness policy. And one of the requirements is that we give an annual report to the school board, so that's why I'm here today. Student wellness is very important, and one of the things we know about wellness is that there's a lot of things that determine what your health is and your ability to do the things you want to do in life. And so as we look at our students, we know that there's things that, that impact their ability to be their best person and to succeed in school. And so really, that's, one of the purposes of this committee is to try to make, make sure that we are doing our best to make sure our students are in their best state of being so that they can learn. And there's a lot of things that impact that, including your ability to, your amygdala is not in stress mode so that you're feeling safe and belonging, and those are some of the criteria, I think, to make sure that a person is ready to learn. So when we, that is actually one of the questions that we do. We have a, we do a survey every year of the students, and one of the questions is, I feel safe. So we did surveys, every year we've done this, elementary school students, third and fourth graders, middle school students and high school students. And then we also surveyed the staff and parents. And so I don't, I'm not going to get too far into the weeds in this, but there's a lot of links, so I apologize, but if you really want to, you can go all sorts of links in to see all sorts of things. But, so the elementary students were surveyed, and some of the strengths that we saw are that, the students were asked, what activities do you do outside of school? And almost all of them said they do at least one activity. So that was, it's open-ended, and they can report on a lot of different things. And 80% of them say that they feel mostly or always safe, so that's also a good thing. And that the 81% said they have a trusted adult that they can talk to. In the middle school, the next bit down there, Tammy, if you can go down a little bit further, we have, we didn't have as many students do the survey this year. I'm not sure quite why that was, but 174 students. But this actually, I've been doing this every year, adding the next year, so you can actually kind of see as time goes by what the responses are. So I think it's kind of interesting that, and then 2020 was when the kids were surveyed and they were at home because of COVID. So if you notice the very bottom one, I feel safe at school, 90% said they felt safe at school in 2020. It's gone back to on a normal. So I guess that was kind of a different, kind of a, interesting perspective to see that. But overall, actually, the feeling of safety at the middle school is, is up, it's to 72%. So that's, that's better than the previous years, so I think that's a good thing. And then at the high school, as we go down a bit more, the students are pretty, they think they're pretty physically active, or they have some good opportunities in the school district. 58% feel they agree or strongly agree that they feel safe. I'd like to see that number higher. But, and then social media, I know you guys have a policy you're going to be looking at coming up, but there's a lot of cellphone use. I think there's that something to really think about when you're looking at policies. And you could, if you really want to go into the weeds, you can go down into each of these reports and see the, the real nitty-gritty of what the analysis was, and then also the student reports, what they actually said. There's a lot of open-ended questions, and you can, if you click on a link in the link, you can see those things too. So I want to thank Cassie Podvin, who's here from Dakota County, who helped with our analysis of some of the, the survey results. The Student Wellness Committee meets four times a year, and the list of people that are on it is on the, on the report. Any questions for me right now about anything?
Yeah, it may not be the nature of the survey, but I saw, I think, as an educator, when you see the responses for those that have a trusted adult, you immediately think about connecting with those that don't. Is that a capacity of this survey, or is, is that not a tool or function on the other side? If you kind of understand the spirit of the question, can it be done, or is that, is not a tool for that?
We do have a spot where there's, we're able to ask the student if they want to share with us, but we do not know who, it is totally anonymous. So if they choose to, they can, but it's not, we don't have a, that, that's why it's not, it's anonymous, so that, yeah, it's a little scary that way.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'd just like to ask, when was the survey taken? I'm just curious, given the, all the changes at the middle school.
Yeah, it was in March, April. I think April was when it was done. Yeah, there, actually, it's listed if you go, click on the link. Yeah.
Thank you.
So.
Any other questions?
Director Brian? Just any thought on why so few students took it in 2024?
At the middle school? I, I'm not sure. I think it really more has to do with when, how it was put out and who did it and which grades, and so I, I, I do not know exactly why that is.
All right, anyone else?
All right, thank you so much, and I appreciate your service to our schools and our students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You could, thank you. Perfect. All right, next up, we have a Building Construction Fund project update with Ms. Subert.
Thank you. So the Building Construction Fund accounts for the money the district received from the voter-approved bonds, and it can be used for school renovations and improvements. So a few updates since last month. The first one is that the Kennedy Deferred Maintenance Project is now complete, so that's moved into the completed section. The reallocation from R2 projects, so at the last board meeting, the board had approved the middle school pod redesign project for $235,000. So that's been reflected there. Our subtotal of available dollars at this point is $159,000 approximately. And then the other update is that the middle, oh, in the, in design projects, the middle school pod redesign has been added there. And overall, in the Building Construction Fund, there's about $2.8 million remaining that should be used in the '24-'25 school year. And I can take any questions if there are any.
All right, thank you very much. Next, we have a data request update from Ms. Moan.
Good evening. We have, our legal bills this month do not include any expenses for data requests, and since the last board meeting, we've had one data request that came in this morning and has already been responded to.
Thank you. All right, next on our agenda, we have School Board Representatives and Committee Reports. First up is IST 917 with Director Zuzik.
Thank you. The spring of the year at 917 is really busy just because there's so many small schools that we operate that there's a lot of graduations, and that was a fun season. There's another thing I just wanted to mention, just for our citizens that is of interest, and that is that we have contracts. 917 serves nine different districts, and in two of those districts, they operate programs, but they operate programs with staff that are provided by the district itself. And in Inver Grove Heights and in Farmington, Farmington Public Schools continues to pay the employee. And in Inver Grove Heights, the, Inver Grove Heights School District continues to pay the, the teacher and the paraprofessionals, and these are really unique programs. They are early childhood, very high-needs programs for kiddos with very big feelings and very big behaviors, even though they're really little kids. And the reason that 917 operates those programs is because of their expertise, and I just have mentioned that because I don't, I can't think of one at the, in Hastings that we should necessarily be looking at that sort of model, but it's just, it was an interesting thing. And as we were reviewing that, I thought that that's something I'd bring to the community and bring to the board. The other, this is just a big deal. Longstanding Business Director for 917, Ms. Nicole Rausch is retiring. And with respect to Ms. Rausch, I'll just say that three of the hardest things to, to manage in school funding are area learning centers and special ed programming and career technical ed, and that's the entire book of business for 917. Not to mention all of these, you know, goofy relationships like I was just describing with Farmington and Inver Grove Heights. There's just a lot of moving parts, and the timelines are always really strange because we have to do things so that member districts can do things on their timeline. And, and Nicole's resignation is significant. There is a, there is a lengthy overlap in time that the new person will be there while Nicole's there, but, but we will miss her deeply, and I really appreciate her service. And the last thing is, I think it was Sunday, there was an article in the, in the Minneapolis Tribune about sign language interpreters and how hard they are to find. I think it was Minneapolis. Well, I know it was Minneapolis Tribune, I think it was Sunday. But the, the gist of that article was that for our deaf-heart-of-hearing community, it is getting really super hard to find interpreters. And so it makes me think about, as we consider all of the different pathways that we have, a pathway to interpreting sign language might be something that, in an entrepreneurial spirit, we might consider. So with that, thanks.
All right, any questions? Thank you. All right, next up is the AMSD update with Director Brunz.
Yeah, I won't highlight anything from their early June, late May newsletter they put out, and they wrapped up the legislative session really well because we just had that in visual form, and I think that's a lot more appealing to folks and a lot more accessible. I will highlight two fails that they identified that were pieces of work they wanted to see accomplished that didn't make it, and then also just budget projections and that, what that might do for our advocacy at the state level. But there are no increase in local optional revenues, so that was a pathway they thought they could leverage to boost funding for schools and make up for some of the things that inflation has done to our budget. But also, there hasn't been any movement on any flexibility regarding instructional hour requirements and how that satisfies credit earning. As schools look to pivot to be more innovative and be more competency-based, we're still stuck and tied to that, that time, that piece. So there was no movement on that, but they think that their work done this spring will be helpful in January of '25. And when it comes to that lobbying, if you're going to go ask for money, it's good to know how much money your parents have. And the fiscal year '24, which is concluding on Sunday, it's up 2.1% over projected revenues, so it's likely that there will be something to fight over and beg for come January 2025. So get your sympathetic faces on and get your data and facts and pitches together.
All right, thank you. Any questions? All right. Next is the Community Collaboration Committee update from Director Pine.
We have yet to meet again since the last event. Director Biermeyer and Director Brunz and I will schedule a meeting probably later summer to kind of start planning and then getting all the dates on the calendar for the future meetings, so as far out as we can get into next spring, so we're not in the middle of everything that's going on in May.
I would appreciate that as a parent. I know. Thank you. All right, next up is the Facilities Committee update from Director Milner.
The Facilities Committee has not met since our last board meeting, but we will meet again on August 9th from 8 to 9 in the conference room in the district office.
Thank you. All right, and then we have a Finance Committee update from Director Zuzik.
We had a, it was about an hour long, which I appreciated the brevity of it. But the, the goal of the meeting really was from about 30,000 feet to evaluate the district budget for '24-'25. And a few takeaways from that meeting. And I, I mentioned this not so much to my fellow board members, but to the public. There are many different funds that are operated by the district, and each of those funds has a different set of rules. And understanding that is critical because people think, gosh, why don't you just take this money, maybe, you might say, you have all of this money over here that's held in reserve for dental insurance. Why don't you use that dental insurance to buy books? Just, those are all just rules about the way that, that the budget necessarily has to work. And being reminded of, of the, the different rules for different funds was really critical. The district should know, the community should know that the district's finances are well-managed. We are in a good financial position, but moreover, we are very well managed financially. It also struck me that there is no downtime for the Business and Finance Department. It is constantly doing something major. And it's by design that that happens because everything's scheduled out throughout the year, and it's associated with timelines for the federal government, for the state government, and for our relationship with our, with our auditor, so that everything is, we are ready to give the data to the right people at the right time. And, and then of course, you know, to give data and information to the school board so that we can make decisions as well. And the last thing that struck me was how systematized and operationalized all of finance operations is. It is, it was compelling to me, and, and it, it struck me that so much good planning has gone in place to make sure that mistakes aren't made. And, and, and the transparency is remarkable for, not just for school board members, but, but for the public as well. So thank you to Director Subert and to her team for the good work that you do. Our next meeting is December 15th, pardon me, October 15th, and then we have another one in December. Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, next up is the Native American Parent Advisory Committee update from Director Brunz.
Yeah, it's not that they did not meet. I was not in attendance at a family emergency come up, so I don't have anything to report back on that, but I want to extend my apologies. I've reached out to Keenan as well, just that presence is important, especially when we think about having all members of the community present as a part of our work and be a part of their work. So that apology is deep, and it's, it's been extended.
Thank you. Do you have a date on the next meeting for them, handy?
Not in front of me, but I'll pull up.
Okay, thank you. All right, and then we have a Student School Board Committee update. All right, and then we have, uh, Student School Board Committee update from Vice Chair Dressley.
So the committee has not met yet again since our last meeting, but we are going to get a, um, meeting on the books hopefully tonight, so.
Thank you. And just so, there's some awareness on the board, uh, I did send out a note assigning mentors. Was that last night? I don't know. My week is crazy. So, uh, mentors for the student members have been assigned. And again, it's, uh, Director Zuzik, Vice Chair Dressley, and myself for this first year. Having more senior board members, we decided to go that direction in our last meeting. Next up, I'm guessing, is a very lengthy update from the Policy Committee, from Vice Chair Dressley.
So the Policy Committee met on May 30th. The committee reviewed seven policies, one form, and also revised two policies that were, um, detailed during our working session. Does anybody have any follow-up on the, do you want me to go through each? Okay, so then I'm going to go ahead and just pause on that. And these policies will be detailed in the readings that follow. And then I'm going to skip over to our June 21st, 2024 summary. Um, the committee met on June 21st. The committee reviewed 10 policies, procedures, and forms that will be detailed in the readings that follow. Please note that the following policies have been revised to reflect the 2024 legislative updates. Policy 503, policy 507, or sorry, policy 506, policy 507, 509, 513, 521, and 806. 503 has been taken off the agenda, so that one we won't discuss. Um, the remaining 26 policies with legislative updates will come to the board in July.
I just want to say thank you for all the work that you've put into getting 50 policies updated in a very quick amount of time.
Okay, so we'll just roll right in here and we'll be back on to the May 30th summary. Policies for first reading, 504, student dress and appearance. Um, we replaced our current 504 with MSBA's model, and we're recommending first read. Um, we also looked at this in our June policy meeting. And there was some language changes to Section 2A, we removed "suitable", or Section 2C 5, we replaced hoodie language with "hoodies must not interfere with the educational process". Section 2DC, removed to a protected minority group. Um, Section 2DD, added costumes unless they correlate with a school-sponsored event or activity. And we're recommending first reading tonight for this policy. Any questions or concerns about the student dress and appearance? 506, student discipline. Policy 506 has not had a full review by the committee since 2022. Um, because of this, there are a great deal of changes in this policy, but the biggest one is that the matrix, matrix was removed from the policy. We also looked at this policy during our June meeting. And a majority of the changes reflect model policy. There are a couple spots where it was unique to Hastings, and so they stayed where they were being unique to Hastings. We kept those. Um, we did remove Section 7, or I'm sorry, Section 8A22 because it was a duplicate. The legislative updates have already been added to this policy. Any questions?
I just wanted to make a statement. The matrix during the Policy Committee, when we were discussing this, the reason that we wanted to remove the matrix is because there's a lot of, um, a lot of things in there that are not student discipline related. Um, and they're actually covered in other places. So you kind of, you don't want much of that because when you touch one policy, then you have to change the other and, and that kind of thing. So that was the discussion.
Yeah, if I may add to that, it was also because the matrix is set up really to be more procedural than policy. And so it's just a, we, we felt it, uh, more appropriate to, to be outside of the policy itself.
Any further questions or comments on policy 506? 509, enrollment of non-resident students. Um, the committee discussed this, and there were some formatting updates, but all other changes reflect model policy and the 2024 legislative updates. Any questions on 509? 509.1 PR, student enrollment procedures. And 509.2 Form, student enrollment. These are administrative, um, procedures and forms. So they're be on the consent, consent agenda tonight and won't go through the three reading process. Then we'll jump back to our May summary, student fundraising. Based on our current policy, the annual report section was removed. All other changes reflect model policy. We're recommending first reading for this tonight. Any questions? 513, student promotion, retention, and program design. The committee dis- discussion, um, Section 2B replaced "are" with "may be", and Section 2D 2 replaced "may" with "will". All other changes reflect model policy, and we're recommending first reading tonight. So, and no questions? I'm just going to keep rolling here as long as I don't see anybody's hand go up or get my attention if you want me to stop. 518, DNR, DNI orders. All changes reflect model policy. We're recommending first reading tonight. 519, interview of a student by outside agency. All changes reflect model policy. We're recommending first reading tonight. And then, uh, policy 521, student disability, nondiscrimination. The form was removed from this policy, and it's now a standalone form. Other than that, the only thing that was updated besides the model policy updates was to reflect the new coordinator information in Section 3. And then 521.1 Form is the form that I just spoke about, directly out of the policy. And now it's a standalone form, and it will be on the consent agenda. So we're recommending 521 for first reading and 521.1 Form for consent agenda. Next, we have 722, public data requests. Section 3D added the data practice, um, contact is the Director of Human Resources. Again, we, there was a language change from "may" to "will" in Section 5C. All other changes reflect model policy, and we're recommending first reading tonight. Policy 722, or, I'm sorry, Form 722.1, public data request form. ISD's form was replaced with MSBA's model policy form. And the reason for that was because of the address, um, request in our previous form. And it's not in MSBA's, and it, it's not a requirement of the form to have that in, have that in there. So it's optional if people want to provide that or not. We're recommending that for consent tonight. And then last, for first readings, is 806, crisis management policy. The updates reflect model policy and the 2024 legislative updates, and we're recommending first reading tonight. Okay, so now I'll just go right into second readings. Second readings, um, policy 417, chemical use and abuse. This one was on hold because we were getting feedback from, um, counselors on their licensure and their, um, ethics, their ethical codes. So we got that feedback, we received that feedback from them, and we're moving forward with the policy with the changes that have been made, um, reflecting model policy. And then the changes that we discussed at our last meeting when it was up for second, or for first reading. Any questions? 505, distribution of, or temporary distribution of non-school-sponsored materials on school premises by a student and employee. There were no additional changes to this except for changing the word temporarily in the policy name. 507, corporal punishment and prone restraints. The updates that you have seen to this policy are based on the legislative updates for 2024. Policy 507.5, school resource officer, no changes have been made since our last reading of this policy. 508, extended school year for certain students with individualized education plans. Also, had the legislative, I believe that, just I'll check. I think that had legislative updates in it. Nope, it does not. So that one did not have any updates since our last reading of it either. If there are any questions on second readings? Third readings, policy 423, employee-student relationships, no changes, changes have been made. Policy 430, employee recognition compensation, no changes have been made. 501, school weapon policy, no changes have been made. 502, search of students' locker, desk, personal possessions, and students' person, no changes have been made. 503.2, early admission to kindergarten, no changes have been made. And 529, staff notification of violent behavior by students, no changes have been made. So that wraps up policies, policy readings for tonight.
There is one more on here, 429. If you could speak to that, please.
I apologize. There is 429, so 429, it, we're recommending that it, let me just get up here to that. In compliance with the federal regulation 2 CFR 200.381, this policy should be adopted in a single meeting with the understanding that the committee will complete a full review to ensure the policy language exists elsewhere. And this is, um, to be in compliance with our audit. Policy 208, Section 5C allows the board to adopt a new or modified policy by a majority vote of a quorum of the school board in a single meeting. A statement regarding the emergency or the need for the immediate adoption of the policy shall be included in the minutes. So I just want the minutes to reflect that and. Yep, so 429, conflict of interest, we sunset it last month after two readings. But based on some of the language in the conflict of interest policy that we need to have based on the federal regulation for the audit, we're going to recommend that it gets put back in place while we figure out where the other pieces, or where the pieces of the policy are located in other spots. So any questions about 429? And it'll be on consent.
I'm saying this, but I, but as I say it, I'm, I'm, I, I'm asking to have it verified. The reason for the urgency is the audit. Thank you. Because if we do it in one reading, we need to have a reason to, to, you know, push it forward. And that's the reason.
Yep, absolutely. With no further policies? Or no further questions? Good deal.
Thank you for all of that. All right, um, next we are on to our action items. And first up is our consent agenda. So I'm looking for a motion on this.
I move, or I motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Can I get a second, please?
Biermeyer's second.
Right. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, all of those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously to approve the consent agenda. All right, then we move on to our individual action items. Uh, first up, we have the personnel report, and I'd like to request a roll call vote on this one. So if we could get a motion on this first, please?
I'm motion to approve the personnel report.
I, I would second the approval.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, and then Clerk Milner, if you could please take a roll call vote.
Director Pine?
Here. Yes.
Director Zuzik?
Yes.
Vice Chair Dressley?
Yes.
Chair Tate?
Yes.
Director Brunz?
Yes.
Director Milner, yes, and Director Biermeyer?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, next up, we have an amendment to the '24, '25 calendar.
Uh, there is a recommendation, this was discussed in the work session, to change November 1st from a student contact day to a staff development day. And this is in regards to the required number of hours for our literacy training. Um, not only do we have the training for the phonemic, um, phonics component and the phonemic awareness with Core, but also our new curriculum with Wit and Wisdom, um, really didn't allow for any additional time for our staff, um, for other training. And we are also doing a lot of work with curriculum alignment and curriculum documents. And so the request is to change that day to a staff development day. Um, that does leave the district in full compliance with required hours with the state of Minnesota.
Thank you. All right, any questions? Okay, with that, I'm looking for a motion on this item.
Brunz will make a motion to approve the '24, '25 calendar amendment.
Thank you.
Milner's second.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor of approving the '24, '25 calendar amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously to pass the '24, '25 calendar amendment.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have the, uh, 20, proposal for '24, '25 athletic fees.
Okay, you have some documents in front of you. Uh, this was presented by, um, Trent Hanson in regards to the request. So you have a summary of what athletics, um, our fees have been. So in that table, we look at in 2000, um, the athletic fees started at $3 per athlete. Um, and you can see how that has changed over time. Uh, most recently, that was reviewed and updated in 2020 and '21, when at that time, there was a tiered review of all athletics and looking at the cost per participant per sport. So they, uh, were evaluated that way, which you have some additional information there also. Um, the proposal is to increase those by $20, making our fees 195, 220, and 285 respectfully. And then individual and family maximums at 660 and 880. And then, uh, looking at what we're anticipating for athlete registrations. You have a lot of background information, um, that looks at why this proposal is. And really, um, expenses are outweighing, uh, right now what our revenue is. And so we talked about a number of options to be able to address this, but to provide the service and safety of our students and not eliminate transportation, some of those things, um, the recommendation is to increase the cost. And then you also have in front of you, um, the sports that are in the grade one, which are 17 teams, grade two, nine, and that grade three, um, the most expensive ones. We have two that fall in that category, being, uh, both hockey. And then there, um, you also have comparisons of our neighboring districts and what, uh, how Hastings compares. Questions you have?
All right. With that, I'm looking for a motion on this item.
I motion to approve the 2024, 2025 athletic fees as proposed.
Pine's second.
All right, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 And with no opposition, motion passes unanimously to pass the '24, '25 athletic fees as proposed. All right, next we have, uh, the budget for the '24, '25 school year.
I make a motion to approve the budget as presented, uh, the '24, '25 adopted budget, particularly after taking the time to, uh, review it with Ms. Subert and, and our Finance Committee.
All right, can I get a second, please?
Biermeyer's second.
All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving the '24, '25 school year budget, say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously to approve the '24, '25 school year budget. All right, next we have, um, the IST 200, Long-Term Facilities Maintenance, um, with Ms. Subert. I believe, sharing some information.
All right, Tammy, could you please pull up the revenue spreadsheet? It's the third attachment in there. Thank you. And then if you, so this first spreadsheet is the revenue projection for long-term facilities maintenance. And this revenue is to support facilities maintenance needs for schools. It is a formula-driven revenue source that's based on pupil units and building age. And then in order to qualify for the revenue, a district must submit a tenure plan to the Commissioner of Education. So there's this revenue spreadsheet that we will submit. And then next, I'll look at, um, a expenditure spreadsheet. So the easiest place to look on this one is row 57. Tammy, if you can just scroll down a little bit. Um, that will show the total general fund revenue for LTFM for each one of the years. And again, it kind of varies year to year based on enrollment and building age. But we are, um, starting fiscal year '26 at about 1.6 million. And then, um, as we get And then as we get further out, you know, out by fiscal year 2034, we're at about 1.562. So it decreases slightly. All right, so then if we want to move on to the expenditure side, again, there is a form created by MDE that the district's required to complete. And the information that we use to complete this report was based on a facility study that the district had. We had ICS come in and do a facility study, and they help us track what projects need to be done in the future. So there's a few different categories on this report, but the first category is this category one. And that is going to be all of our health and safety expenditures. So within physical hazards, that's going to be things like playground resurfacing and required inspections. Other hazardous materials is the next category. So that's going to be like lead and radon testing, infectious waste management and disposal. The next one is environmental health and safety management. So the district contracts with CISO or Meridian to have a consultant on site. That expense comes out of that category. We also have a health and safety online database. And then some of the related trainings and certifications for staff and a three-year asbestos inspection comes out of that category. The next one is asbestos removal and encapsulation. So any projects that are identified and then the periodic inspections that go along with that. The next category is fire safety, so that will include fire alarm equipment and inspections. And then the last category within health and safety is the indoor air quality. And that would be if there were any violations found within the district that we needed to rectify. The next category then is health and safety for $100,000 or more per project, per site, per year. And we do not have any projects planned that are individually more than $100,000. So there's no expenses listed there. Category number three is voluntary pre-K, which we do not qualify for. And then the next category is the gender-neutral, single-user restroom. So you'll see in 2025, we have $425,000 budgeted there. We have a grant for $75,000 that we're working on right now to do a restroom remodel at Kennedy. And then category number four is the accessibility. So that's just removing architectural barriers to meet needs of students and staff with a disability. And we do have some kind of small expenses in those categories for 27 and 28. And then category number five is kind of the main category. So that's our deferred capital expenditures and maintenance projects. So within that, there's again multiple categories, but the first one is building envelope. So that's really anything that restricts the transfer of air, water, heat, light, and noise. So some of those examples are like window replacements, caulking, tuck pointing, insulation, any type of barriers related to that, building walls, exterior doors, things like that. The next category is building hardware and equipment. So those are hardware or equipment that are usually attached to the building. So like doors and door hardware, lockers, bleachers, PA systems, elevators. The next category is electrical. So anything that's for the power supply and distribution. And some lighting systems can be included within that category. The next one is the interior surfaces. So that will include flooring, wall covering, painting, ceilings, countertops, and then like installed cabinetry and attached surfaces. The next category is mechanical systems. So that's going to include heating, ventilation, air conditioning, or HVAC and control systems, fire suppression and alarm systems, and then electronic door controls and control software. Plumbing is the next category. So that one's pretty self-explanatory, but fixtures, piping, water supply to the building. So it will include like wash stands, toilets, showers, sinks, drains, any other plumbing components. And then there is the professional services and salary. So professional services and in-house salaries for work performed on deferred capital and maintenance projects to prevent further erosion of facilities. So right now, we do have a consultant that we work with through Loeffler that oversees some of our LTFM projects. We can code the cost of that contract to here. And then we also keep track of some of our internal staff, their time, and we'll recode that into this category. And then roof systems, so roof removal and replacement, anything related to that. And then the last category is the site project. So it's really anything that hasn't fit somewhere else that is considered deferred maintenance. So parking lots, lighting, tennis courts, fencing, playground, stadium bleachers, and then field turf replacement. So in this one, it's kind of important just to watch. Let's see, if you get down to the ending fiscal year fund balance. That one's really small up there, but it's in board book. But you can see, we're kind of starting at about 4.8 million. And as we work through the 10 years, that fund balance really runs out. The district was able to do a lot of deferred maintenance through the bonds. So we've been kind of building up some money in our LTFM account, but we will need to be very aware of the expenses that we have in the upcoming years related to LTFM. And I can take any questions if there are any.
I guess I'd just like to make a comment. This is, it's interesting timing. We have to submit this because of requirements with our new director starting on Monday, literally. So submitting this right before he starts his job. I understand that this, this, obviously, he'll have a new set of eyes and perspective looking at this. And I guess the question is, how, how easy is this to revamp or correct or change, update?
So it's submitted each year and really, you know, like MDE is looking at the first couple of years. So 25, those projects are already planned for and started, but 26 can be changed again next year and all the out years can be updated as we go.
Thank you. All right, any other questions? Yep, Director Pine?
So when you're projecting project spend on like flooring or plumbing or electrical three, four, or five years from now, is there like an anticipated projection of what those materials and labor is going to cost factored into that?
Yes, as part of that ICS report, they include an inflationary adjustment on all the future years.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Then I'm looking for a motion on this item, please.
I move to approve the Long Term Facilities Maintenance Tenure Expenditures Application.
Second it, Dressley.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Long Term Facilities Maintenance Tenure Expenditures Application, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously to approve the 2026 Long Term Facilities Maintenance Tenure Expenditures Application. All right, next on the agenda, we have the fifth grade middle school science curriculum.
All right, so at your work session, you had TWIG was presented and you had the materials. So today, the action is a request to approve the fifth grade TWIG science curriculum.
Zuzik makes the recommendation to approve it. And then I've got more to say during discussion.
I second that motion, Dressley.
All right, any discussion?
I just, when do you think we'll see the recommendation for other grades of middle school curriculum? Yeah, for science.
Yeah, the request was that they wanted to continue to study that. Fifth grade was more in a dire need, and they were solid on the TWIG curriculum. And then if you also remember, there's a lot, fifth grade just falls in an interesting area. So there's a lot of middle school curriculum that's not applicable to fifth grade. And so they want to continue to review that. I would say you'll see that next year.
Thanks.
All right, any other discussion? I just want to say I read all of it. The, all that I got anyway. Couple modules, and I think it just looks really, really cool. Like absolutely completely hands-on, and I'm excited for, it's going to, it's going in for this fall, right, for fifth graders? So that's my son. He's not as excited about it as I am, but so be it. All right, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving TWIG as the fifth grade science curriculum, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously to approve TWIG as the fifth grade science curriculum. All right, next up, we have the recertification of the census.
All right, so this is a little unique, so you have a resolution in front of you. The one area category that is funded by district resident population is community ed. So when a district's population increases by a threshold, a district has the ability to recertify that census and change the funding specifically for community ed. In this case, the population in Hastings has increased by 360 since the time that it was last certified, which will, it's not a big dollar amount, but that will increase community ed's revenue by about 2,500.
Any questions? I'll make a statement, I think it's exciting that our population has grown. Right, that hasn't been the trend, so. With that, we of course hope that kids come with it, at least at some point. All right, and with that, I am looking for a motion on this. We will be doing a roll call vote as it is a resolution. And I would recommend that the motion say something about waiving the reading.
I move to approve the certification of update district population estimates and waive the reading of the resolution.
Zuzik seconds.
All right, any discussion? All right, with that, Clerk Milner, if you could please take a roll call vote on this item.
Director Pine?
Yes.
Director Zuzek?
Yes.
Vice Chair Dressley?
Yes.
Chair Tate?
Yes.
Director Brunz?
Yes.
Director Milner, yes, and Director Beer Meyer?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, next on our agenda is moving to even year elections. On this one, we have two resolutions attached because I truly don't know which direction we're going. The board has discussed this topic twice at two different working sessions. There is additional information provided for, this is information that was provided originally. Well, the first, the map I threw together for our first discussion. And then the second one was developed for a community collaboration event where they discuss this topic so that the public has access to this and we have this in front of us as well. So I would like to propose that rather than making a motion first and then having discussion, we have discussion first instead so that we know which, which resolution we're going to propose making a motion on. So with that, I will open it up to discussion.
I'll make an opening comment by saying I appreciate your wisdom in having the conversation before we have any proposals on the table. I think that this is the perfect time, the perfect topic to do that. And I also want to comment that a month ago, when you said jeepers, you know, I just am not comfortable extending the terms of each of the elected officials on the board by one year, going from four to five, I thought, you know, that's interesting, but I just don't think anybody cares. And we found out that people care. And there was a lot of conversation about that. And there was some conversation about, you know, let's do this economically responsibly and let's do it in such a way that, you know, going to the five-year term is, you know, the, in some ways, the the quickest way to get to it. And it saves money for the district. And so there were some people that, that talked about the prudence of that decision. And I will comment as well that in all of the conversations that I saw, I think that there was only one that talked about hoping to keep it on odd year elections. So I don't, I don't think that having odd year elections has any weight behind it. And so I'm happy to see that both of the resolutions presented here are, are really toward the end of getting to even year elections. And the, the intention of that is to save the district money and to save some of the effort on the part of our district support team. So, but boy, you were right, and I want to give credit where credit's due. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, who wants to go next?
I'm still in the same spot I was in last time we talked about it. I think it's a good idea to move forward with moving to even year elections, obviously, because it's less administrative strain, it's less money. More polling places are open, so for all the same reasons that I said during our last meeting, would be why I would still support this.
Well, I'll start. Probably be talking a little bit yet. To say or to think that we got into some smoke-filled room and wanted to have a power grab, which has been some of the accusation out there, is a bit ridiculous. I'm sorry decisions weren't made before, and I'm upset about that, too. I want to talk about curriculum, I want to talk about students. I'm tired of talking about this. And we're going to make a decision, and somebody's not going to be happy, and somebody is not going to care. But this wasn't done, there's no intent here, there's no takeover here. There's resolution here, there's solutions here. We were brought in to make decisions. And I apologize that decisions weren't made before. That's before. I think I'm ready to move forward with this. We getting, we've, we've been getting involved sometimes and talking things over and over and over and over. And then we're not talking about students. So I'm ready to move forward with this immediately. And I'll take the consequences as they may be. And some of the stuff I've been told or, or has been put out there in, from the keyboard warriors, I'll, I'll take it. So let's make a decision, let's move forward. I'm ready to bury this.
Yep.
We have talented people here. Okay? So I, I'll go to war with any of you, and I'll support any of you. I don't care background, I don't care agenda, I don't care political view. We have talented people here, and I'll work with you.
Well, you're right, we've been talking about this and talking about this, which means I go home and think about it and think about it. And one of the things, when I was deciding to run, that actually almost scared me away from running was all of the legislative changes that were passed down to school districts and all of them being unfunded. I thought, okay, I don't want to be part of a board that has to make cuts. That scares me. So for me, this decision has nothing to do with agendas, politics, whatever words we want to use. This decision is a fiscal decision. Any place where we can save money and do it quickly, because there's going to be a lot of things happening here in these next few years that we have to be creative with our funding. And so to me, it is not at all about an agenda. No partisan decision in this, other than let's be really smart and save money and tons of time. and tons of time. When we talked about the administrative time, that hits me even more than the money. I mean, that is a lot of hours to put in for, for an odd-year election. And that pulls away from their job, their other full-time job in caring for the district and caring for the students and making sure everybody's, you know, doing what they need to do. So to me, it's purely, let's make this decision to, to be smart fiscally.
I agree about the fiscal comment. It's really hard when it seems like every work session or every meeting we've had in the six months' time, we're spending money or approving to spend money. Once in a while, we get a little gift of money coming back, some good grant writing and good grants approved. But I'm, I can assure you, we've approved more going out than going in. I've asked other school districts, I've asked other board members, and they instantly just say, just extend a term. Just extend a term. Like it's a no-brainer, that's what you do. This is how you fix this. Why would you even contemplate anything else? And, you know, taking into a lot of public comment that we've been seeing, you know, you're trying to weigh out all the pros and the cons of both. But there doesn't seem to be a lot of things, especially after even the experts came in last month and all the dialogue. It's, seems like a no-brainer to move forward, especially for administrative staff. There's not even a dollar amount you can put towards the hours that they spend on it. I know the day I turned in my application, that was, you know, somebody skipping out of the room, like this was their last time they had to do elections because it was so time-consuming. So, you know, anytime we can give them a lift, I think that's important, too.
Yeah, I will chime in for, and much of what's already been said is true and bears a lot in this decision. So if you think about that fiscal responsibility in that piece. But I also think about the civic participation. If you think about moving from a, from a timestamp of collecting maybe 20% of your electoral group, that population in your community, that's tough. But if you can raise that engagement to 75% of those that cast a ballot and increase the number of polling places that are available to people, I think in the spirit of democracy, we do that, increase student, or sorry, community participation. And as we make the decision, think about how we breathe that voice back in and make sure that they're a part of this as it moves forward.
All right, and then I will give my two cents, I guess. I have literally gone back and forth on which one of these two resolutions I am in favor of at least 50 times. We are, part of our ethics code for the board is to vote our conscience. And my conscience tells me I am not in favor of elected officials lengthening their own terms in general. However, I will tell you, the, the concerns that I have, one, yes, money, the time, that. The other thing that I've mentioned that's in this little map thing is the board continuity. And that is, should the three of us not be elected for another term for whatever reason, there's a potential there that the longest-tenured board member would have been on for one year. And having been on the board now for two and a half years, I, I very strongly feel, there are so many things that are cyclical or annually cyclical. It takes a good two years to get a really good grasp of being on the board and that rhythm. The other thing that really resonated with me when we had the city and the county election folks come in was when we got to talking about them being experts in doing this and us having a non-expert doing this same work that they would take over if we were on even-year elections. And after that meeting, I got to thinking about the potential risk involved in that. Because one of the things that they mentioned was how the election laws change and their requirements change. And having to stay on top of that, and it is a legal requirement, is concerning for me. So that conversation and that single thing is what kind of flipped me more into the extend the terms and be done with it realm to stick, finally. So that's where my head is at.
And with that, I move that we approve the resolution to extend terms and waive the reading.
Can I get a second?
I second that.
All right, any further discussion?
To my fellow board members, I, I will be voting not supportive of that resolution. I'm supportive of getting to even-year elections for the financial reason. Based on the amount of feedback that we've gotten and the type of feedback that we've gotten, I would have chosen to do it the other way. Having said that, as soon as the vote's made, I'm completely supportive of going where we're going and going there together. So.
The delay makes no sense. The cycles make no sense to me. I mean, I, and you have probably had dialogue with people who aren't for it. I've had a lot of dialogue of it's good that you're getting it done. So there is that dialogue out there. It just isn't brought forward in, in the manner that it is the other direction. It's, it's making decisions and coming to a solution. And that's what our job is. That's what we were elected for.
Yeah, and as I cast a vote this evening, I would just be considering that, that the establishment and the fostering of public trust in the work that we do, even if, if we know what our values and what our integrity is, outward perception and, and the community piece of what we do is everything to ensuring that we have the spirit of the community with us and, and we are with them. So that'll, that'll be guiding how I vote today.
And I, I respect that totally. But I'll guarantee you, you're never going to get 100% in the public. Okay? So, so what are we looking at? What are we really looking at here? You know, you're never going to get 100% of what you want in any way, shape, or form. We could make any decision. Somebody's not going to be happy with it. So we make decisions. And we deal with, as we were told, we'll deal with the consequences. And I thought that was a pretty interesting statement when I read it via email. But I don't know what those consequences are, but we need to make a decision.
And I will say, excuse me, the emails that the board received anyway were about, I think they were split about 50/50 regarding both directions, right? So it sounds like other people, you know, we've had individual conversations and whatnot with different individuals. Frankly, I was surprised after we had the county and the city folks come and speak about that. And I know this was mentioned, you know, in, in the radio interview that you had done and, and I had mentioned it as well. I was frankly surprised that we didn't hear from many, many more people. And I was thinking, well, gee, maybe people don't really care about this that much. And, and, and truthfully, I mean, it is one year, it's a one-time thing. So, you know, it's over and done. And, and yes, I, I'm all for having these, seeing that we, we spent, I believe it was about $240,000 since this law changed on elections when that could have shifted to the county. I just, I'm very reluctant to spend any more money on elections when it could be going into the classrooms. So, anyway. Any other comments?
All right, and with this, again, as it is a resolution, we will be doing a roll call vote. So Clerk Milner, if you could please take a roll call vote.
Director Pine?
Yes.
Director Zuzek?
Nay.
Vice Chair Dressley?
Yes.
Chair Tate?
Yes.
Director Brunz?
Nay.
Director Milner, yes. And Director Biermeyer?
Yes.
All right, please note that the resolution has passed on a vote of five to two to extend the terms of the existing school board members. Thank you. Next up, we have another resolution. It's the night of resolutions tonight. And this one is on the Minnesota State High School League Member School Participation, or yes, Participation. Is there any discussion ahead of time? I don't know, Director Pine. I know you're the representative. Nothing to add? Okay. All right, with that, I am looking for a motion on this item.
Zuzek makes the motion to approve the resolution and I recommend waiving the reading.
Thank you. Can I get a second, please?
I second that motion.
All right, any, any discussion? All right, Clerk Milner, could you please take a roll call vote?
Director Pine?
Yes.
Director Zuzek?
Yes.
Vice Chair Dressley?
Yes.
Chair Tate?
Yes.
Director Brunz?
Yes.
Director Milner, yes. And Director Biermeyer?
Yes.
All right, thank you. And then finally, we have, can we watch the quick video?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So the Minnesota State High School League does ask all boards to annually review this very short video.
All right, thank you. Last item on our agenda for action tonight is the final district vision card.
All right, this was also reviewed at the work session. And so this is updated with the school perceptions survey questions that were applicable. The MCA has been added for science and math. NWA has been replaced with FastBridge because that's an approved screener. And so the rationale for the student achievement, why things are listed how they are, the MCA reading is listed first, followed by FastBridge screening data, which is literacy screening that will be done three times each year. And then math, science. I did include MCA opt-out just to let board members and the public know, what is our percent opting out? We could look at that and relook at what our percentages are, but our proficiency data, the official data, is the official data. But it is helpful to know what that percentage is that do opt-out. ACT, these things were on your previous vision card as well, graduation rate, passing rates. Then looking at the achievement gap, and this looks like it may be the same. But here, we're looking at the median of our groups that we have on numbers that populate a cell, which is required to be a minimum of 10. And then continuing to look at the secondary credit recovery, our student enrollment in a variety of areas, our PSEO enrollment, we've added, chronic absences. And then, like I mentioned, we have a section for the school perception survey for our students and our families. Mental health, all of those metrics are the same with one addition of a survey question. Our participation number in activities and athletics, our staff engagement, which also includes those perception surveys, and then our highly-trained certified staff. This is a continuation as well. We just clarified what does that mean? It's our staff with a master's degree or higher. And then our family survey data, our family engagement opportunities, which are also specified. And then we added operational efficiency with MDE School Finance Award. And so I'll populate those earlier years as well since we've received that since 2008. Building conditions note that was also on our survey. And then a technology satisfaction survey. And then we'll add two community engagement metrics. Any questions?
I want to thank you for including that opt-out information, especially since the state doesn't take away that data. I think it's important for folks to know that when a student and family make the decision to opt-out of that exam, it counts as a, as a zero against our data set. So it So it does skew that in a big way, depending on the number of folks. But either way, then it makes the data set that we're talking about less accurate because we're including those that didn't test and giving them a score, and it counts against us.
All right. Any other questions, comments?
I will just say that this looks really great. I'm really excited that this is what we're potentially moving forward with tonight. So, thank you, Superintendent Champa.
Yeah, I think this is really well done. I think it encompasses all the touchpoints that I think we need to, you know, have a good eye on, and appreciate all the work you put into it.
Thank you.
All right. With that, I'm looking for a motion on this item.
I move that we approve the 2024 district vision card.
Second, Milner.
All right. Any discussion? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously to approve the 2024 district vision card. All right. And next on our list here are future meetings. As a reminder, the board does not have a work session in July, so our next regular meeting will be July 31st. And if I can switch over to what we're talking about then. As Vice Chair Dressley mentioned, we will be doing a bunch of policies that are coming through with legislative changes. We also will need to appoint a new representative to the relicensure board. That has to be done before the paperwork is submitted to the state in September, so I put that on the agenda for July. Our current representative is Director Zuzek. And then that will be the new annual cadence on that one. We will have our quarterly donations. We've got, we will be doing superintendent evaluation summary. We're doing the performance evaluation meeting tonight after this meeting is done. So I will give a summary of that. And then the other thing I have on here is student handbook review. So that's all I have for now for that. And that's it for future meetings. I think we've got, we've got some policy meetings coming up for sure, and then, like I said, tonight. So, yes, go ahead.
I would just like to add that the Hastings May Pack will be meeting July 11th at 6:00 PM at the Pleasant Hill Library. I encourage folks to be there. It's pretty special.
Thank you for that. All right, Director Zuzek?
Just in the spirit of full disclosure, the relicensure committee, it takes a little bit of time. It's an hour, hour and a half, one day a month. It's at like 3:30 at the high school in a classroom, and you really don't do anything other than bring good snacks and observe people doing good work. I mean, it's impressive how much work they do to make sure that everybody's license is up to date. And ultimately, it is the responsibility of each individual professional to maintain their own license. And this committee goes far beyond what they would need to do, and it's impressive. So.
Thank you. So board members, think about that if you would like to do that, or Director Zuzek, if you'd like to do that again, or continue to do that, I should say. Right? And with that, I am looking for a motion to adjourn.
I motion that we adjourn tonight's meeting.
Can I get a second, please?
Second, Milner.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously to adjourn at 7:53 PM.